Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the May 19th, 2015 City Council Meeting to Order. Could we have roll call, please?
Mayor Dutes?
Here.
Vice Mayor Buckland?
Here.
Councilmember Cleveland?
Here.
Councilmember Didball?
Here.
Councilmember Gill?
Here.
All right, I'd like to open the meeting with invocation and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to ask Lauren Crager if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance once the invocation is completed. Please stand.
If you'll bow your heads with me as I pray. Dear wise and loving Father, we are grateful for your presence in this public meeting. Thank you for this day and the plentiful blessings you provide each of us. Let us be mindful of the significance of the coming weekend. We are truly grateful for the sacrifice of many to preserve freedom in our nation and throughout the world. I pray for guidance in this meeting tonight. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those that live and work in Yuba City and the surrounding communities. It's in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is Presentations and Proclamations. Salvation Army Week, I'd like to invite Captain Tom Stambaugh to come forward, please. Tom here. All right, moving on to item number two, Youth Commission Report.
Good evening, everyone. So, we are Yuba City Youth Commission. My name is Lauren Crager and I am the chairperson of the Youth Commission. I am a senior at River Valley.
My name's Justine Gill and I'm a senior at River Valley.
My name is Ruben Nacidou and I'm a junior at River Valley.
My name's Lana Floyd and I'm a sophomore at Yuba City.
My name is Bree Gill and I'm a sophomore at River Valley.
My name's Isabella Toche and I'm a sophomore at River Valley.
And my name's Jay Paul Mann and I'm a senior at Yuba City.
So, our mission, or our commission acts as an advisory body to the City Council and involved city departments on all youth-related issues. Commissioners give voice to the concerns and needs of the youth in the city of Yuba City and provide great leadership in the community.
So, projects we have been up to, so we've been kind of going with things that we, just to get the community involved, so things like Fall Festival, we've been doing a lot of volunteering, fundraising, and promoting recreation programs, and some joint commission workshops like with the older commissions and whatnot, and some possible projects that will come into the future.
Okay, so in the fall, we put on a festival for the youth in our community and we put on various craft stations and activities just so that way kids from middle schools can have something to do this fall with their families. And on the next slide, there will be some of the activities we put on for them.
In this slide, I'm playing a game with a little kid and we're like racing with plungers and then in this one, they're doing arts and crafts.
Okay, so this year, we volunteered with HANDS and it was one of our many volunteer opportunities that we had. And HANDS stands for Helping Area Neighborhoods Develop Successfully. And with HANDS, we painted houses, we planted flowers, cleaned up yards just to help improve the looks of the neighborhoods.
In the summer, we put on the Concert in the Park where we give local bands the opportunity to showcase in front of the community. And so, we do a barbecue here and that's just where we get some of our funding. As you all know, we had a big parade on Pluma Street celebrating California Chrome and his race. And so, one of the many booths that we had on, at the parade was selling Yuba City shirts and water for the citizens.
So, one of the needs that we addressed this year was promoting youth sports. So, we have a video of the youth basketball. All right, so how long have you been playing?
For, uh, since second grade.
Second grade, so what do you mean, seven, five years, nice. What's your favorite part about playing?
I like the teams and the coaches, they're really nice.
What's your favorite part about youth basketball?
Probably just playing my team.
Mine's just probably passing and shooting.
Hello again. So, we also try to do a bit of fundraising throughout the year. So, one of the things we do is sell these I Love Yuba City t-shirts. You can get yours for $10. We sell them at different community and parks and rec events. And we also try to sell food and things at the concert, the park thing that Isabella talked about earlier and things like that.
So, one thing that we were also at was the commission meeting and that's where we talked about what businesses we'd like to see come into the community as well as help with the five-year plan. And then we were also at a Parks, a meeting for new parks where we discussed the features that we like in current parks as well as things we'd like to see in future parks.
Some possible projects that we will be seeing towards the near future would be things like a Spring Festival. So, also to bring families together and enjoy few booths here and there. A Combined Youth Dance, so where, you know, a bunch of us kids in the community come together and just have a fun dance and, you know, enjoy each other's company. Day of Play, so helping kids get active in the community and showing them that exercise isn't always have to be so boring. And Teen Movie Night, just to have a nice relaxing night under the stars and watch a nice movie.
Thanks for letting us present. Thanks.
Well, I for one would like to thank you for this creative presentation. It's probably one of the best ones that I've seen as being on the council. And thank you very much for your participation in helping the other youth in our community. Keep up the good work. Okay, good. All right. Tom, if you'd like to come forward? Hello, Tom. I'm gonna have you go ahead and hold this and I'll read the shorter version of this. May 7th, or excuse me, 11th through 17th is Salvation Army Week. And I would like to welcome Captain Tom Stambaugh of the Yuba Sutter Salvation Army Corps. Salvation Army is celebrating 150 years internationally and serving those in need. Recognition of the Salvation Army Week provides an opportunity to recognize how the Yuba Sutter Salvation Army contributes to our community. The Yuba Sutter Salvation Army serves 6,268 citizens in need of support and services, fulfilled 300, excuse me, 3,570 grocery orders, assisted with over 2,000 families and provided 59,145 warm meals. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, John Dukes, Mayor of Yuba City on behalf of the entire council, do hereby proclaim that the week of May 11th through 17th, 2015, be Salvation Army Week in Yuba City, California, and do urge all of the citizens to join me in saluting the steadfast men and women who bind up the brokenhearted and renew the heart of the community by their quiet service and compassion. Proclaim this 19th day of May, 2015. Would you like to say anything, Tom?
Thank you to the community for your support. We couldn't do it without you and we're grateful to serve in this great community. Thank you.
All right. Public Communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting?
Mayor?
Yes.
And you missed one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Going back to item number three. I was just trying to help you, Ricky, but... The Chamber Commerce Tourism Report.
All right. We can just go right on to public. Well, good evening and thank you, Mayor Dutes, for remembering me that time. And council members, we really appreciate being here tonight and to be able to give you a very quick overview. So, I'm gonna be respectful of your time and keep an eye on the clock to make sure that I can leave a little time for you to have some Q and A at the end and address any questions. So, I do want to say too, to our audience out there is that we have several of the pieces that have the more substantive information in regards to what we've been able to do in tourism are actually included in supplemental materials. But we are all about transparency and so any of you can contact me at the chamber anytime and I'd be happy to provide any of those reports to you. And I'm also welcome, give me a call, come see me and we'll go over that with you if you'd like as well. So, without further ado, just go ahead, move on. Table of Contents, I'm gonna stop there just for a minute. I wanted to address right up front that I'm reporting going all the way back to the beginning of our relationship, which began in 213. And that was a little bit prior to my coming on board. And there was some transitions going on within the chamber at that time. And so, there was some, there was some substantive work that was done, but it was more on infrastructure side in 213. And while they had some notable accomplishments such as the beginnings of awards of putting together some of our deliverables like the website, they did launch the California Swan Festival and I want to make sure and to bring that up. I'm gonna spend more of the time talking about the things briefly that we've done since January 214, since that's when I came on board and what I can speak to the most. So, with that being said, we're gonna start with the primary marketing goals because these were what were outlined in our 2012 proposal and those are part of your supplemental documents. And if you bring those up, I'll just talk to those real quickly. Go ahead, hit one. Okay, so we created the optimized website that was one of the goals that was launched in April of 214. I'm gonna let my new friend Brianna talk a little bit about some of the results of where we've been with the visitor's website. I'll talk about it more broadly. The visitor's website, it was launched in April of 2014. It's currently at about 40%. We have great plans for moving that forward. We've been working in conjunction with our Hospitality Association to determine what is the best way to do that, that will meet their corporate goals as well, that we're representing and having the information and how we develop trip planners on that website. So, now we're moving forward with that. That's gonna move over to, I'm glad to be able to pass that along to bring that up to 100% over the next few months. It's also gonna go through some other infrastructure changes that are gonna be great improvements to that site. Keep going. Established Collaborations, this is one of the things, much harder for me to quantify especially in a short time because this is gonna go more to our non-financial ROI. There was a lot of work, substantial work going on behind the scenes. When I took a look at the proposal that was placed before the council back in 212, there were some things that I, that stood out to me. I thought it was a really good start. There was a lot of information, a lot of discussion about what could happen on the marketing side and start branding, but, but in my view, that there were some areas that we could improve upon, that we could do better. That if we were really gonna be inviting people into our community, if we were going to invest substantially in marketing efforts to expand the Yuba City brand and our area region brand, that we really needed to make sure that we could provide everybody with a quality experience once I got here. So, I can, and we'll talk about later, but there were over 500 hours of, of, of literally just meetings, of meeting with restaurants and retail and hospitality associations to start collaborations, to build an infrastructure that we can welcome people so that once we get them here, they'll want to, we can move them around the community. We can get them not only staying here, but spending their money in our eateries and our, in our retail locations and not only that, but get them coming back. Some of the associations that we're affiliated with are, I think, well, let me start with the Hospitality Association was established in February 214. There is a list in your supplements of who's a participant at that. And to give you guys an idea of the broader scope of what Hospitality Association does, it's a group of the hospitality industry, those who are directly and indirectly making impact in hospitality. So, that can include hotels, lodging, resorts, restaurants, retail. And what they're, we're doing is that turned from, it went from bimonthly meetings, well, we actually got together and did some strategic planning of what would be the objectives and goals of that group. But then that's moving from, by, from bimonthly to monthly and now quarterly and it'll become a, really an information sharing, a way to plan and promote, and enhance activities that are going on with the region to get us working collectively together. The Visit Yuba Sutter Steering Committee was also established at that same time. That's made up of people who are direct stakeholders within the hospitality industry. Those are, very specifically, they are Yuba City Hotels and Lodging. And that's it, we get together and they have a voice at the table in how we develop our budget surrounding what we're doing with marketing, et cetera, et cetera. So, they're a part of every decision. And then we go back on the broad scope and then we go through and we kind of implement the more micro-level plan. The North Sierra Wine Trail is another association that we've been working with very, very closely, the Historic Society, the museums. And then we launched also as a part of this same kind of effort and collaboration and way to promote the regional tourism was our swag bag program, which started in January. And this actually came as a suggestion, which was a great one, from the Hospitality Association. So, you guys can each receive one of those. This isn't a formalized process. We have through our Visit Yuba Sutter website and collectively within the chamber, a process for organizations to call in if they have a group coming in. We will not only provide them with welcome bags that move them around to our community, but they receive personalized offers that come from whatever jurisdiction they're coming to. You're seeing an actual example from the city of Yuba City's training that came in so that we can measure those. So, they come in, they come in their name, they, they receive visitor information. We put those together for them, there's no cost for that. And some organizations will determine if they want to have some additional support, whether they provide some swag themselves or, or something that we put in. You find, for you guys, you'll have one of our flash drives with this presentations in your swag bags. And today, we've given out 382 of those. And that includes sporting events and recruiting events, training events, other localized and the RV Ware Rally. So, we do some substantial things that are, I'm gonna move on real fast so I can get Bree in here real quick. Faster, faster. So, Increase Visitor Friendly Sample Two of Business Atmosphere Through Education Publicity. Sample was some of that work that we did on the infrastructure side. Steven Danback, who also is still affiliated with our Visit Yuba Sutter efforts, spent quite a bit of time with our restaurants. And one of the things we wanted to be able to promote within this, this area that's so known for its agricultural industry is that we wanted to be able to point people to local restaurants, et cetera, that carry local products, local foods, local wines. And so, he began that effort of working with them and getting, and has currently two additional restaurants that began carrying three local wineries, also starting buying locally-produced vegetables, et cetera, so that when we are talking to somebody about where they can go and get a great local meal, that we can point them to something specifically. That's, that's kind of one of those things that we say from an infrastructure standpoint of things that had to be built that didn't pre-exist. Sample, samples for Bishop Pumpkin Farm, raising and selling pigs. That also came from work that Steven's doing and a collaboration between him and bringing the Cordy Brothers, Darryl Cordy here. And all of a sudden, boom, Bishop's Pumpkin Farm has a, a new industry. Some very cool things happening through the visitor program that people would never know. Go ahead and next, Bullet, Bullet, by the Official Visitor Center. The Visitor Center, if you haven't been to the chamber lately, is going through a huge restructuring. The entire downstairs has been pulled apart and we have new display cases that are being made, et cetera. We are preparing to apply, which I know Bree, I shouldn't say, we're, we're gonna be applying this summer for, to become a California Welcome Center. So, we're, we're in the works of that conversion and making that happen. And then with the grown chambers role, I think we're on that last one, the ambassadors partnering with visitor bureaus. That includes the Western Association of Visitor Bureaus, California Watchable Wildlife, Central Valley Tourism Association. And we're also bidding to host the Outdoor Writers Association Conference in 216. And we're discussing and working, I know that this is something that's a, this is a, this is really the, one of the most important components of this tourism effort that have, that has been presented to the chamber to be stewards of. And so, this is something that we don't take lightly. We've been in discussions since I've been on board for a year and a half. I think we're making good progress, we're not there yet. We're still early on in the discussion phase on what that would mean and bringing together the entities that would be involved in making something like that happen. But I'm very, very hopeful and positive we continue that, we're, we're gonna get there. One more. Industry Growth, hit it again, real fast. 3.3%, 3, uh, 3.33% increase in tourism from 213 to 214, up to 696.1. That's positive growth. You're gonna find a lot more charts in your supplementals. Go on to the next. And Budget Overview, I really, you have the, the, the entire financials in your report. I wanted to just pick out a few things so that you can kind of get an idea of where the big bucket things are going. To date, we've received 175,000 of 210. And the last component of that will be distributed in July, the last 35,000. And the administration of what was allotted to the chamber to administer that program was 63,774. The lion's share of that actually went to, we brought on Stephen Danback at a day and a half as a contractor for the time, was paid out of our administrative funds. So, we really did, if we were gonna be, if we're gonna be successful in this, it needed more than what I alone could contribute. I didn't want to become a barrier, we needed more time or we needed more boots on the ground. Marketing, 65,602, advertising, a little over nine, promotions, 1753. Events, that, just to clarify, there's also marketing, advertising and promotion within the events, but they are event-specific. And this was one of those decisions in working with the Steering Committee of how we broke things down. We talked about the promotion and enhancement of events that either pre-existed or the funding to seed events that would be tourism-specific. And then having dedicated marketing that was on the broad on the region and then focusing with driving traffic back to Yuba City. And then advertising, which we have a, a pretty substantial advertising campaign, which you'll see all the demographics and information in your supplements. Yeah, Chamber in-kind contributions, this is what we've been, what we have given in hours of in-kind donation and you can see that, I won't, I won't read that to you. Go ahead and go to the next. And with that, I'm going to introduce a very lovely Brianna Struckmeyer, who we're very excited to say is our now full-time Director of Visitor Services. Bree has a substantial background, she's a wonderful fit. She's really perfect for this job. I'm excited to work with her. I know that we're gonna be looking to, to meet our goals as quickly as possible in this last year and hopefully looking forward to the future. And with that, Bree, real quick there, let it come up and say a few things.
Sorry, thank you, Ricky. Thank you, I just wanna say really quickly, thank you to everyone who I have met in my short two weeks here with the chamber. Everyone has been so kind and so welcoming, open arms, wonderful community, just getting the feel of things and already really enjoying working with everyone and look forward to meeting everyone else. So, I'm just gonna run through quickly, run through quickly, a few things. Starting with the next year, in 2016, we will be launching our first annual California Farm Fest. This is something that's been in the works for a while. I will be kind of taking over where we left off, working with the community, really expanding, and then looking forward to seeing all of you there when we launch. Increasing the publicity of existing tourism-related events at the regional and state level. We've generated quite a few metrics, both from the Visit Yuba Sutter website along with our Facebook page, that is kind of letting us know where the interest is coming from, both regionally and then also out of state and international. So, using some of those demographics and the statistics to better target our promotions for community events and things like that. Collaborating with local industry marketing professionals, we've put together a really wonderful team to move forward on these efforts. So, just a few people that are part of this. Barbara Steinberg is coming on board with us and she's fabulous. Barbara's, her background start, started with the California Office of Tourism. She worked for Visit California for 16 years, has been very active in the California Watchable Wildlife Community. So, she knows quite a bit about communities that support that effort. And then with us, she will be consulting, she'll, she's gonna be working with us on a consultant basis. So, very familiar with working with communities, getting them off the ground, very knowledgeable in tourism, so we're very lucky to have her. Along with Barbara is Heidi Gardner from Graphics Marketing, local marketing firm, as well as Michael Vaughn from Third City Marketing. Along with them, we will continue to work with Steven Danback on a project management standpoint. And then also, we have Judy Mann, who is our Administrative Assistant, who is very knowledgeable in the historical side of our community. So, like Ricky had mentioned already, we're working to submit an official application to become a Visit California, Certified Visit California Center. The application process comes back around the summer, they'll be submitting an RFP. We're working with Tiffany at the office in Sacramento to be prepared when that does come around, that we are ready to go, that our building has all, meets all of the necessary qualifications and that the process shouldn't be too difficult. But we do, it is, we will be competing with other communities who are bidding for the same thing. So, it's not, it's not the easiest process, but we're gonna put a lot of work into it. And, let's see here, securing a match of funds. So, along with working with the city, we also will be, hopefully, working with other local officials to secure more funding for this tourism effort. So, as of right now, we do have a meeting scheduled with the Sutter County Board of Supervisors that will take place next month, along with the Yuba County Board of Supervisors and the City of Marysville. So, thank you very much.
That's actually next week. So, you know, we could say it was next month, but it's actually next week. It'll be same Tuesday. And we're looking at 100% match of, not from those jurisdictions alone, but from a combination of jurisdictions, grants and private funders. So, with that, we've gone over our short amount of time, but any quick questions that we can address? Lots of information in your packets as well.
Any questions? Yeah, through the mayor? Yes. First of all, great show, Ricky. Congratulations to yourself and the chamber staff for moving the chamber forward from what it was a few years back. With that, I do got several questions just for a clarification purpose. So, at this point in time, I know we had one-time money of, I think, 210,000. So, to date, I think it's about 175 roughly used up to finish out the rest of the year. As we move forward, and again, like I said, this was one-time money, have you done any, or has the chamber done any quantifications as far as like, you mentioned the Swan Festival and other events? There's a lot of people that come to this community that haven't been, but how much money have they actually spent in our community as far as sales tax and stuff?
So, based on, you do have a report on what the sales tax has been in your supplements from, for, over 214. I could give you demographics of exactly the events that we've seeded, like the California Swan Festival and the numbers of people coming in. We've had over 1,000 people in and out of that traffic, 326 attending the tours of those. 75% were overnight guests. The, finding a way to quantify and exactly pinpoint from three-seeded events that we're currently doing or promoting and enhancing has been a question that we've been really trying to work out ourselves. How do we separate out what has been the impact, direct impact of what we're doing? What's gonna be a longer, what's gonna take a longer time to measure? Working with, Jermaine is my co-chair on the Steering Committee for the Hospitality Association and is trying to work with us and work with the hotels to get them to collaborate and cooperate, to share information so that we can, we can measure the impact of the overnight stays and relate them directly to our efforts. And with the promoting, I could tell you directly how And with the promoting, I could tell you directly how some of those things are happening and what we're trying to measure. For every current event that we, that we, that is offered within the community, whether we brought it to the community or not, we are investing. We have a person who spends fifteen hours a week, um, promoting that particular event. We had twenty-two, twenty-two locations throughout a three-hour radius over two fourteen that they were marketed press releases to. We've increased that to a hundred and fifty locations from a, a circumference that goes from two hours, three hours, four hours and above. For those same, every single event that's put on in this community that we're marketing press releases and another ninety-one for media kits. That include, uh, television and et cetera. So we're, we're working with them to find a measurement tool that people will be willing to give to us so that we can go back and say from these demographics, would they be willing to, to request the information that will allow us to be able to make quantifiable connections. But we need them to cooperate, and then a second part of that, um, goes right along with what you just said, the swag bags and part of that purpose is, is those coupons that can be, that you have to actually leave the coupon at the retail or restaurant and it's, it's actually named for that particular event. It gives us a tool to go back and measure and work with each one of those restaurants and find out at least if we're having an impact, if they're, if those are moving around the community and be able to quantify those. So we are, we are actively seeking ways that we can directly connect for the council members and our other stakeholders who may come in with us. A direct impact which is, has been hard for us to do, other than looking at reports that we're receiving through the state or through the EDC and looking at traffic for retail, accommodation, sales, et cetera. We'd like to be able to show some of those directly, I can say that there are some things that we're seeing, one of them being that having, um, tour bus. We've had our, our first bus tour that came from our Visit Uba Center efforts, literally through our website. We've now started an ongoing relationship with Sun City Tours for, for first day tours by bus, we've had our first one with forty passengers. And a second one scheduled for the spring, and they're also looking at doing national bus tours now and going for multiple days. And that came, I, that's, we can pinpoint that exactly going back to our efforts. So as I get more information, I can make those connections to the council members, I'll be passing that information to you.
Just great, just one other quick question on the point and then move on. Um, obviously at this point in time, I believe there's no other jurisdictions that are contributing to, to the pot at this point in time.
They are not.
Okay, and just other suggestion might be is, as we are or as you are looking to expand, is to perhaps build partnerships. I know you mentioned something about the Farm Festival, perhaps visiting with Farm Bureau and having Farm Bureau partnership on it. Cause you're talking about farming or Sun Suite Growers and/or the Association of Realtors, because if somebody's coming here wants to move. And I think if you want to have this event very, very successful, you've got to get other partners than just the government jurisdictions, number one. Number two is just a point, is having been involved in the chamber and being chairman twice, one of the things, the only thing I can caution yourselves on is you can't get ahead of doing events to cover for other events. The Chamber of Commerce has got to become, uh, self-sufficient as an operating budget and then just to promote the community itself from the tourism dollars. And at one point in time, there was a tourism center that was being set up and that's all they were going to do was just work on tourism as a region. And not as Uba City or Marysville or, you know, so just a point.
So, so let me just really quickly, I know you guys need to move on, but those are great points, let me just address these things. So in the, the letters of support, you'll see that there is a letter of support from the Uba Center Farm Bureau. We are working with them and partnering along with many other organizations that have come to the table, specifically about California Farm Fest. But also in building out agritourism, historic tourism, the list is extremely long of who has been included. We have separate committees for each of those to build those efforts, but the Farm Bureau is one of them. And they've also made recommendations to bring other entities that they, that, uh, will be reaching out to as a part of that effort.
I guess my point is just, it's great, it's great to get them, but it's also nice to have money at the table.
Right. And then the, the last part is in regards to the separation, we treat tourism completely separated at the chamber. I mean, we went so far as we, we have separate accounts, the, the, the money's not commingled. We look at and we're developing the, the tourism, the, the site currently where the chamber is located with the view that I'm looking long-term and a sustainable effort would be within two years, having our business side of the chamber, the chamber not be located at that address. You're seeing some of the things that we've been talking about, if we're able to create a sustainable self-supporting entity and that would be dedicated to tourism. So there's a whole lot of things that I, I don't have time to go into here, but at any time, I'm glad to go into in detail.
Great, thank you.
Thank you Ricky.
Thank you.
Have a couple speaker cards here, like to open up public hearing and allow, uh, Dale Eimer. And then after Dale, if Jackie could be waiting in the wings, Jackie Silman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, I'll be very brief, actually I'm a resident of Uba City, twenty-two sixty-one Drum and Drive. And, uh, have been very active with the chamber on the board since the, uh, tourism, uh, effort began. And, uh, one of the things I just, a couple of things I just wanted to state was of the many hours that Ricky had listed up there in her, uh, presentation. Um, I was but a cog in a part of that initially with the, uh, steering committee. Um, but that steering committee directed of the four to five members to start, directed fifteen board members, thirty ambassadors. And working with, uh, vendors, retail, hoteleries, et cetera, as Ricky mentioned earlier. And I just wanted to state that, um, the tremendous effort that was put together to make this thing, uh, make this work. And, um, anyway, just each of the, um, the largely a number of volunteer hours put together for the likes of, we talk about the Swan Festival, but other groups as well to, um, to bring additional folks to this area. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to be very brief and, uh, mention some of those efforts and, uh, it's, it's a very much a large community that's putting this thing together. So anyway, thank you for your interest.
Thank you Dale for your comments, Jackie? I suppose she's not on the card here.
My name is Jackie Silman at nineteen sixty-four Cherry Street, Mayor Dukes and council members. Well, we have a very happy story, we want to talk about the tourism. Nicole and I and Tina Williams, oh, over three years ago, actually wanted to see this tourism center come to fruition and, um, definitely to support the community. And one of the areas that we wanted to touch on right away was the, uh, Stampede, it's the eighty-second Stampede this year. And we do have some numbers for you that we're very impressed by and we directly want to give Ricky and the staff of the Chamber of Commerce. It's been huge, it's been a great partnership, we have seventeen percent out of town people coming this year from last year. We have seventy-five percent more in sponsorships this year from last year. Um, the, the, one of the reasons why the rodeo, we can't grow that much bigger, but we can get cash prizes to bring in the, this is a professional sport. So this is the P, P, I always get this wrong, I have to go to my, my little calendar, yeah. So that's how you get this quality talent to this area. This year we have the Clydesdales, horses that are coming with express personnel, there's ten rooms booked for seven days for the staff of the Clydesdales at the Hampton Inn. Uh, over on the other side of the river, there are hotel rooms for the cowboys that come to town. So we do have a full, you know, schedule and throughout the month of May, uh, we've been doing this and, and really, again, the tourism aspect of it has been huge. So, and we'd love to come back next year and help you with those numbers and, and hope you'll consider staying with this tourism. Um, the goals in mind that we originally set out and we're, we're just really pleased to support that, so.
The only thing I would like to add to that is obviously parrot everything Jackie said. And truly with the Stampede, one of our biggest, um, things that we've tried to do is make it a by-county, by-city effort. We've tried to take it away from, obviously it's still the Marysville Stampede, has a historic title. But, um, more than anything, we're including Uba City in a lot of the events. I mean, not just in getting hotel rooms, but the cattle drive, the kickoff parties actually in Uba City. Um, another trivia night is at downtown Plymouth Street. So we're trying to make it so that it's more of a regional effort and less of a complete Marysville, Uba City type, um, effort. So we thank, uh, Uba City for all of the support in everything you guys have helped us with in trying to accomplish our goals.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we close the public hearing and, uh, that concludes our presentation on the Chamber of Commerce Tourism. All right, now moving on to public communications. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting, public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda. When they are called, public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Is there anyone who would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, written requests, uh, members of the public submitting written requests at least twenty hour, twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. It will normally be allotted five minutes to speak and I believe we have one which will be later on on item thirteen.
Correct, that was the only one we received.
Appearance of interested citizens, members of the public may address the city council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. All right. Moving on to item number six. Public hearing, community development block grant. Mr. Gale.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, it's a pleasure to be before you this evening to, uh, hold a public hearing and hopefully adopt our five-year consolidated plan and our one-year action plan. At our last meeting, I gave a presentation describing basically what we've done, uh, under the process to put this together. Uh, Katrina out of, uh, the Development Services Department and a consultant, Carol Stewart, has helped put this together. Uh, this evening I can answer any questions you might have, but would ask that you hold a public hearing, I take any comments and then, uh, adopt, uh, the resolution as described in the staff report. So at this time I can answer any questions, I can go through my presentation, uh, whatever you'd like to do, Mr. Mayor.
There any questions of council? No questions, all right, open up the public hearing, if anyone from the public wish to speak on this item, just step to the podium. Seeing none, close the public hearing, bring it back to the council.
To the mayor.
Yes.
Uh, not having been able to be here la- last meeting, I missed your wonderful presentation, but I did kind of go through this document a bit. And, uh, have a few just comments of, uh, basically what my position and my, my personal priorities would be. Based upon past experience at the county and then also trying to relate what I know of, uh, to the city. And, um, going over this, uh, I basically categorized them the way I, what I like, uh, to be first. And I would like really, we keep having trouble and with affordable housing, it's, it isn't available. If you have a shortage of affordable housing, the housing that lower ha- uh, income housing that is there tends to, um, degrade. Uh, they don't get taken care of as well, because people aren't saying, well, I'm going to go get the same, you know, a nicer place for the same price. So, uh, that is a problem that I think that we have in Uba City at this time, due to the fact that we haven't built any new complexes in, uh, ten, eleven years. And so some of it's, that's a long time to not have built, um, apartment complexes or large amounts of homes. So construction of new affordable housing would be, um, a very high priority, uh, which is a, I don't think these are listed as priority on here, but, uh, on page two. But that's the lowest one on there or the bottom one. Uh, number two of economic development, uh, business assistance. Um, we, you know, very important that we help our businesses in any way we can, uh, sometimes it's to get out of the way. Uh, and I know of a couple of instances to where things didn't go smoothly. But I know that once the staff became aware of it, um, upper staff, they have straightened it out. And very smooth from then on and, and good accomplishment, I want to compliment the staff for having, uh, done that, stepped in so quickly and doing a good job. See, uh, number three, homeless assistance, um, I know we, in this document, there's a lot of talk about homelessness. Uh, transit, uh, type situations, uh, have been a, an attendee of the Homeless Consortium for quite a few years. Uh, s- almost since its, uh, beginning about six years ago when it became a real, um, solid entity. And many of the concerns that the citizens have brought forward to them have been taken care of, they did address many of them. Uh, but with, of course, you know, some of the changes down the river bottoms, it brought many of those things back to the surface again that we're having to deal with since they can't, don't have as many hiding places in the river bottoms. Um, so we're going to be dealing a lot with that, but the homelessness there. Um, I will say that through that process, uh, the ones that don't want to be homeless are not homeless. Or don't, or, but the ones that don't mind being somewhat homeless, um, they're still in the situation, that's not a hundred percent the case. But our community does a phenomenal job of dealing with the, uh, displacement of people from their homes and taking them into their homes. Uh, that, those are called precariously housed, uh, and they're included into the list basically as homeless. But our community does a phenomenal job of that, as it states, fifty organizations deal with all this. Uh, dealing with those types of things, food, clothing, transportation, housing, uh, health, mental health, taking care of their animals, making sure that they're okay. Uh, so, so I, I really commend our community for doing this, uh, task. And, and not shoveling it off to the government to have to do it, because then it's extremely expensive. And, uh, we have to do it in a way, it becomes very offensive to the freedoms, uh, that were afforded in the Constitution. So if our community takes care of them, it, it becomes a way to work, we, we do it according to our freedoms and liberties. And so, uh, phenomenal job again with the community. Number four, I'm looking at here, it's kind of a combination of the neighborhood, uh, revitalization, revitalization strategy and assist with public housing needs. Uh, that goes along the same line I was just talking about. Um, that is, uh, my number four priority. Five, infrastructure improvement and ADA modifications. Um, of course, we're kind of forced to do some of that anyway by regulatory process, so that kind of would be in the middle, uh, naturally. Uh, six, uh, the minor home repairs and ADA, uh, modifications. A lot of those home repairs actually keep senior citizens, uh, in their homes and the ADA approve, ADA improvements do that. Uh, my father-in-law over in, uh, I think it was Lynnhurst, he lived in a mobile home park. And a group went in there and made him a ramp that he was able to stay in a home, uh, his mobile home for many years longer because they came in and helped him out with that, so, um, he benefited from that type of a thing. And there are a lot of that that goes on in our community, my wife and I modified, uh, the entrance to her business, um, her because of people having difficulty, uh, take going up just three steps, little tiny steps. So we've done that, uh, personally, um, so that is a priority to keep, uh, senior citizens in their home or people that are, have had ADA, um, accessibility, uh, difficulties. Um, seven, um, preservation of existing affordable housing stop, served on the Housing Authority for a long time. Uh, brought, we've, I, I think we've brought it from just a squatting type situation and it is actually upper mobility. Many of the times they, they're moving up and, uh, getting out, we have people that, uh, go to school, they graduate from a program and they actually have an escrow account, they collect money or they get a contribution to that from the housing from a program. And when they get out, they'll have anywhere from four to nine thousand dollars. Uh, one lady actually put it as a down payment on a little tiny home and she's now no assistance of any kind. Uh, and that's the kind of program we have there and it's, I think we've done very well, but we need to preserve those housing. And a lot of that is if we get new construction in there, that forces others to take better care to keep people in their hu- in their places. So that's a motivator for them, so that is, um, a way to get basically two birds with one stone, hopefully.
In the essence of time, could you just speed through this place?
Well, I wasn't your last, I understand that, but hey, you know, I, I understand. Public facilities would be eight. Construction and modification only because, uh, unfortunately that's, that's where the finances are. It keeps us from being able to do the fa- public facilities and funding available for that is much more difficult to get a hold of. Um, so those were, just wanted to make comments on those primary, um, priorities that I would prefer to have and where, um, I would like to see, um, discussion and action on in the future. Thank you.
All right, um, any other further, further comments? Entertain a motion to adopt a resolution on this?
So moved.
A motion then a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 I guess one extension, so we'll move on to item number seven, social host ordinance, presentation by Chief Rob Landon.
Good evening, Mayor Council members. I'm presenting to you again for the second time, the social host regulations ordinance for underage drinking. So I'll make this, uh, much abbreviated, I know that Councilman Cleveland wasn't here last week or two weeks ago. The purpose of this is to establish a duty by ordinance of persons having control over any premises. Who knowingly hosts, permits, or allows a gathering at a premise to take reasonable steps to prevent the service and consumption of alcoholic beverages by minors. And whereas laws prohibiting furnishing alcohol beverages to underage persons target furnishing alcoholic beverages to underage persons. Social host accountability refers to laws that hold non-commercial individual responsible for underage drinking on properties they own, lease, or control. Many people dismiss underage drinking as a normal rite of passage in adolescence. However, it's important to remember that alcohol is one of the most important contributors to death, injury, and criminal behavior among youth. And one common way that underage drinkers gain access to alcohol is at parties. These parties are commonly large gatherings of young people in a home, in an outdoor venue, or, uh, some other area. These parties can be particularly po- problematic because of the number of drinkers involved and large quantities of alcohol consumed. Reports of alcoholic poisonings, traffic crashes, property damage, community disturbances, violence, and sexual assaults are all too common as a result of these parties. And I'll just touch briefly on some surveys at the local, uh, substance abuse steering coalition, who's represented here today by Nina and Dalia was here earlier. And some of the local people, but they did a lot of work put, put for the social host ordinance gathering the information. Results of the two thousand thirteen California Healthy Kids Survey show that seventeen percent of eleventh graders report being drunk or sick after drinking. And twenty-one percent of ninth grade and twenty-eight percent of eleventh grade students in Yuba City report having at least one drink in the last thirty days. Residents of Yuba City reported that fifty-six percent have been given alcohol as minors. And ninety-five percent believe it is important to have laws protecting minors from alcohol use. Easy youth access to alcohol supported by anecdotal reports from young persons. In recent focus groups, youths reported that they often got alcohol from their own homes or at the residence of their friends. Twenty-two percent of high school seniors report binge drinking on a regular basis. So the purpose here, this is more of a proactive than a reactive, um, approach to handling this problem of youth alcohol and parties at large areas that are not controlled by a responsible adult. The, uh, purpose and intent of this ordinance is to facilitate the enforcement of laws which prohibit the service and consumption of alcoholic beverages by minors, as well as to deter the service and consumption of alcoholic beverages by minors and promote the reduction of underage drinking. To establish a duty of persons having control over any premises who knowingly hosts, permits, or allows a gathering at the premises to take reasonable steps to prevent the service and consumption of alcoholic beverages by minors. To protect health, safety, general welfare, and quiet enjoyment of property and properties neighboring the location of gatherings at which minors are served and consume alcoholic beverages. And to impose civil liability for the recovery of emergency response costs to such gatherings. At the last meeting, um, I think Councilman Buckland made a con- a comment about, are we being too lenient with charging the first offenses as an infraction and the subsequent ones as misdemeanors? We had actually talked with Wake Forest and they said that the, uh, more common approach is actually to do administrative citations. So we actually went above that, starting with an infraction because we didn't wanna be as lenient. And we wanted to make sure that people understood that this community wasn't gonna tolerate this. So the first one is a, uh, infraction. Second and second and subsequent offenses are, uh, guilty of, or could be guilty of a misdemeanor and civil fines that include the, uh, cost of emergency services. The fiscal impact is no cost associated with the implementation of the proposed ordinance. Alternative is not to adopt the ordinance, provide staff with direction for adopting the proposed ordinance. And the recommendation of staff is to adopt an ordinance, provide any regulations concerning underage drinking, waiving the second reading. And with that, I'll open it up for questions in the public hearing.
Thank you, Chief, any questions of Chief at this time? Open up the public hearing, invite anyone from the public who wish to speak on this item. Seeing none, close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for comments or emotion. Don't have any comments, but I'll go ahead and move to approve the recommendation for this ordinance.
And I'll second that.
I have some comments here.
All right.
Not just because of, uh, not being here last time. But, uh, thank you, Dalia, for, uh, not giving up ladies and, uh, the team. Um, two thousand and seven, we basically started, uh, to work on something like this at the county. And due to, um, uh, trying to find the proper design of a viable social host regulating ordinance. Um, it was difficult to best. Um, everybody, it was new, everybody was trying to figure out who's gonna enforce. What are the repercussions legally, how's that all gonna come out and watch out? Uh, but I thank you for not stopping and continually moving forward, um, to get this done. And I, I wanna thank, um, I don't even remember, I was at the meeting where you guys kinda discussed a little bit this, I was invited a couple of months ago, but what was the name of the group that was there helping you? Okay, I thought who I thought it was, but, um, and, um, I wanna thank, want you to, again, reiterate thanks to them for bringing forward, um, something that is working in other communities so that we can actually be, um, leaders in our community in this. Uh, and again, thank you for not stopping and keep, keeping it, the pressure on. And, uh, appreciate that.
Thank you for your comments, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, item number eight, Calpers Cost Sharing Amendment, Employee Pension Contributions. Natalie Springer.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council members. This may look familiar to you, I brought a similar presentation and, uh, cost sharing amendment a couple of months ago. This is the second half of the negotiated contracts. So, um, to implement the cost sharing, um, for employees to pay towards their retirement pensions and to transition out the furlough program. So, uh, this is for the mid-managers, uh, first level managers, mid ma- fire management, which they're an add to this, um, this cost sharing amendment. Police Officers Association, police sergeants, and the unrepresented confidential and executive team. Upon a completion of this amendment, uh, the classic safety members will pay nine percent towards their retirement. Who, uh, members that belong in those listed bargaining units. And the miscellaneous will be paying eight or seven percent, um, towards their pension. Um, it depends on what retirement formula they are. I'll just also note, I always note this, um, new Calpers members are already paying their share of their retirement. Um, and that is due to pension reform. Just, um, short procedures on what we have to go through. Um, we went through this just a couple of months ago, but I'd just like to remind you all, um, tonight I do the resolution of intent. And we do the first reading of the ordinance. And then we have actually an employee election on this, and we did that for the last cost sharing amendment. Um, this is just to solidify the process to move it forward, it is, the employee election is required by Calpers. Um, afterwards, I'll return back to council and then it will become effective, um, in July twenty-fifth. And so at that point, um, employees will be paying the nine, the eight, or the seven. There is some fiscal savings to this, but it is offset by, um, the elimination of the furlough program. And so at this time, I'll ask that you adopt a resolution of intention to improve an amendment with Calpers for classic members' cost sharing towards the employer rate per the applicable negotiated contracts for the mid-managers, buyer management, police officers association, police sergeants, first level managers, and the unrepresented confidential and executive team. I'll also ask that you introduce an ordinance amending the city's contract with Calpers that will implement the cost sharing arrangements with the so-named bargaining units and waive the first reading. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Natalie. Any questions of council?
I'd like to move the recommended action.
All right, have a motion.
Second that motion.
And a second, any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, none, motion carries unanimously. Consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. General items, item number ten, wastewater treatment facility chief operator, presentation by Diana Lyne.
Good evening, Mayor Council. So unfortunately, last week, the wastewater treatment facility supervisor submitted his letter of resignation with his last day as of June fifth. And so that, um, sped up the need to, um, to create a chief plant operator for the wastewater treatment facility. I was proposing it as part of next year's buzzet- budget to create the position and delete an operator three position. So this just sped that request up. So I'm requesting that council create a wastewater treatment facility chief plant operator position. Delete the operator three position and have that effective May thirtieth so that we can have a chief plant operator in place prior to the supervisor's last day with the city.
All right, thank you, Diana, any questions?
I'm good.
Entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second, any further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, none, motion carries unanimously. Item number eleven, emergency water restriction and water conservation update, Diana Lyne.
Okay, so, for water supply for two thousand fifteen, we were given a twenty-five percent allocation from DWR. So as it stands today, our allocation is seventeen thousand ninety-nine acre feet. With the State Water Resources Control Board, um, mandate of thirty-two percent conservation. That would put us at water use for two thousand fifteen of about twelve thousand three hundred sixty acre feet. So our anticipated water use in two thousand fifteen will be less than the available water supply, so that's the great news. That's the silver lining. In terms of the state emergency regulations, so in May, they adopted, um, emergency regulations that will go into effect June first. Yuba City has been placed into tier eight, which equates to a thirty-two percent conservation requirement. How the state will evaluate this is they'll compare water usage for June two thousand fifteen through February two thousand sixteen. And compliance will be assessed on a monthly basis as well as cumulative basis. If this, if the city does not meet the thirty-two percent mandate, the State Water Board enforcement measures include informational orders where they request information about your conservation program. Conservation orders where they give you a mandate as to the conservation efforts that you should be undertaking. And then cease and desist orders that basically if you violate the cease and desist order, you could be subject to, uh, penalty of up to ten thousand dollars per day. So we have developed a conservation action plan and I'm not gonna go through every bullet on this item. But in terms of the highlights for education, as we've gone through the violation process, one thing that we've noted is that we need to reach out to, um, the Punjabi speaking and Spanish speaking, um, community. And so in the next billing for the utility bill, we're gonna have information regarding conservation efforts in both Punjabi and Spanish as well as English. And we're reaching, we've reached out to the Sutter Yuba Master Gardeners Group to see if there are efforts you know, o- opportunities for us to coordinate on education and outreach to the community. We're also looking at developing, oh, not looking at, we will be developing a water efficient landscape ordinance. We have to report to the state by the end of this calendar year in terms of that ordinance. And then, um, we'll be doing other activities, community events, participating in the summer stroll, the fair. Um, going out to local organizations to provide presentations. We presented to a school last week, we're presenting to a church group tomorrow night. Um, presenting to another group in July, so as people requested.
Diana, before you move on from that slide, you, uh, said install poll banners in various locations throughout the city. I know that that's something that I had mentioned before, that perhaps so we could have those on major arterials through town to identify for, there it is right there.
So those are the,
For what they're gonna look like.
Yeah, those are the official, what they're gonna look like, so we're in the process of ordering them. That's to remind people of the correct watering days, the two days per week. Outreach to other communities, so we're participating in regional water authority meetings regarding conservation efforts and meeting with other agencies in the region to obtain ideas on effective measures. Um, Sierra and I will be going to the city of Woodland tomorrow to talk about their conservation efforts. As you can see, for the month of April, Woodland achieved a thirty-three point one percent reduction. Um, they're doing really well, this is how Yuba City compares to other agencies in the Sacramento region, we're doing okay. Um, there are other agencies that are in tier seven, fortunately, we're not in a tier nine. But there are definitely things that we can do to, to improve our conservation efforts. With the rebate program, we've had the high efficiency toilets, smart irrigation timers, and commercial spray nozzle rebate program in effect since last July. The high efficiency toilet has been the most successful with forty-one rebates to date. The other thing that we will be doing, we are not proposing to fund a cash for grass program at this point in time. But rather set up the framework for one, so that when grant funds become available, we can say we have the framework in place and we're ready to implement. And then I think most importantly is the continued and enhanced enforcement. We will continue to issue violations for properties that are watering on the wrong day, that are watering on the correct day but wasting water down the sidewalk. Um, individuals using water to clean sidewalks, dry bays, hardscape, and then individuals that do not have shut-off nozzles on hoses. Violations issued to date, this is just in two thousand fifteen, does not include violations last year. Five hundred seventy-nine first notices, ninety-four second notices, six third notices, and we had our first fourth notice last week. Which equates to a two hundred fifty dollar surcharge on their water bill. So, in terms of the enforcement, we continue to have water patrols that go out in the community. They take timestamp photos of the properties. We then issue a letter to the customer, providing them a copy of the photo, the proof. And then, um, any second or subsequent violation, they're told that a surcharge will be added to their bill. And this has been in place since September third of two thousand fourteen. So with that, um, my recommendation is to declare that water supply conditions are still such that they dictate and justify the need for the continued implementation of emergency water restrictions and authorize staff to continue to issue violations per the municipal code.
Any questions of staff? Comments? All right. And, uh, let's see here, we need to adopt a resolution, so entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number twelve, agreement for acquisition of easement, uh, with Loveland Products, Inc., nine twenty-eight Garden Highway.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Item I have before you is one of the last steps in, uh, finalizing the right-of-way needs for the city's garden highway improvement project between Lincoln and Winship Road. So this project's been in the works for a little time. Um, it's just south of the current overlay project and it's, it's in the, um, an older county segment where the reduced width. And in this particular sec- section, the city has gained federal dollars to, um, incorporate bike lanes, um, sidewalks, and then use those dollars for, um, reconstruction of the road. And one of the particular hangups with this is the, the southeast corner, southeast end of the project, um, in front of Crop Production Services. Um, owned by the parent company Loveland Products out of Colorado. Um, the, the property, as you can see in this, um, this aerial, it's the, it's the gray area kind of in the bottom, and why don't we flip to the next slide? Kinda highlight it a little better here with the, uh, with the hash. And then we flip back. Basically, there's this, this bulge in the right-of-way, I mean, Garden Highway that we've never been able to obtain. Typically, the city obtains right-of-way with development. And as new projects come through, we, we acquire, we ask for that dedication with the improvements. Um, unfortunately, with this, uh, this use, um, as a fertilizer company, you know, there's not much, um, demand for sidewalks or, uh, or more development to occur right there. So, so with this, um, step, the move forward, we, we went through an appraisal to get a value of it. And, um, and see what the impacts were for that, and we've been working with the property owner over some time to, uh, to finalize that. So where we're at today is to get authorization to sign the agreement to pay for the cost of the easement, which was valued at approximately eighteen thousand dollars for that area. And then cost to cure, which were impacts to do with the parking lot and, um, access to his, uh, truck turn around in the back. So, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And staff's recommendation is to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement of acquisition with Loveland Products and the amount of forty-four thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars.
All right, thank you, Ben, any questions of staff?
To the mayor.
Yes.
Ben, um, regarding the, the, uh, hard median on that roadway, would there be any way to eliminate that? Which could possibly remove, uh, the necessity of, of acquiring this property?
With this project, um, we're definitely reducing the median. We're pulling it back from the stop bar so it doesn't get continually hit. If you could see um from Lincoln going left turn to northbound. And then also we're we're skin, we're making it narrower. If you could see the um the hash there is the original width, the the small dotted line. And we're going to almost a two to three foot wide median. Uh even with that reduction to that two to three foot median, you're only we still have a foot and a half on our side, but it doesn't gain the necessary um eight eight to ten feet on the south side in that triangle that in order to incorporate the curb gutter and the um sidewalk and then that five foot bike lane.
Thank you.
Alright, any other comments or questions? Entertain a motion, move to approve.
I'll second that.
Alright, I have motion and a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. That's unanimously. Item number thirteen.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight I am presenting the last and best and final offer for Public Employees Union Local One. This is to impose the last best and final offer in Local One. The city's employment agreement with Local One expired June thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. We met approximately twenty-one times and we are unable to reach agreement with Local One. Impasse was declared September twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen. Thereby, we moved into mediation in November of two thousand and fourteen. Afterwards, Local One decided to utilize the fact finding process. Fact finding occurred actually in February of this year and resulted in a fact finding report that was made public in March. The terms of the last investment final offer for Local One is as follows. Employees, and I'm referring to classic employees here, pay the entire employee contribution towards CalPERS, which is either the eight percent or the seven percent, which is dependent on the retirement formula. Elimination of half the furlough, the furlough that we're referring to is what we call um the work schedule furlough, which would return um employees back to work Monday through Friday, eight hours a day for city hall employees. That would be Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM. Cap healthcare at the two thousand and fourteen dollar contribution, elimination of the Me Too provision and no layoff protections. At this time, I asked city council adopt a resolution implementing the city's last best and final offer to Local One and it would not be effective until June thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. So I just want that to be noted. Also adopt a resolution for CalPERS stating the city is no longer paying Local One's member contribution and this would be um effective as well on June thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. That resolution is required by CalPERS. Direct staff to initiate the next round of contract negotiations towards a new MOU with the Local One.
Any questions of staff? Alright, at this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing and invite uh Gary Stuckey who is requested to speak. On behalf of Local One.
Mister Mayor, members of the council, as you well know, we've been embargaining as uh Ms. Walter has pointed out since March of last year. I think we've made a good faith effort on to try to reach agreement with the city. Uh we have, and I can demonstrate but don't have the time this evening, uh that we have moved our position, we have compromised, we have tried various things and yet the city's first offer on the table is your final offer on the table. That's the offer that you're being asked to impose. Frankly, I think it's flawed. It's flawed in several areas. It's flawed because the actual proposal that we received indicates that employees pay fifty percent of normal costs. The pepper reform law bars that until two thousand eighteen from the standpoint of an imposition. It raises issues. It also raises issues about your objective stated very clearly numerous times to end furloughs completely. But yet, the imposition that you're being asked to impose is to continue five percent of that furlough. Additionally, as I understand, the city is supposed to place a cap on the city's contribution. That was not negotiated with any of the groups. It was imposed on fire. But you add the combination of those two things and in my opinion, it's retaliation. Very definitely, it will spark an unfair. I'm here this evening to get the group together to begin what I consider our public awareness campaign. Because so far we've attempted to deal with the city and the city's representatives to bring closure to this round of contract negotiations. Which I want to point out that during the period of uh from March to September of last year. I settled three other contracts in three different agencies with very serious financial problems. Including the court in Yuba County, which currently operates under a edict from the Office of Administrative Courts, that they only get to keep one percent of their operating budget in reserve. It makes it almost impossible to negotiate a multi-year agreement. My point is, is that this city, as I've demonstrated, and that's why the fact finding report states that this city has financial resources such that you can stop the furloughs without imposing additional concessions. Your employees have suffered dearly over the last six years. They agreed to furloughs for five. The city imposed the furloughs for this additional year. In my opinion, illegally. That's again, if we don't come to agreement, undoubtedly will spark another unfair. I'm not looking for a battle, neither is Local One, neither are your employees. All they're asking for is fairness. And you know fairness to them is having their two thousand eight salary back without an additional hit to that spendable income. You know, think about it. You know, you're asking these employees to to, you know, revert back to income that they had in two thousand eight. And then reduce that by seven or eight percent depending upon what formula they're in. That in our opinion is not fair, it's not just, and it's not acceptable. So the real issue here, you can direct your team to come back to the table. Then unless you as a body, understand that negotiations is about give and take. It's not about having objectives, it's not about having a set frame of mind in which you come to the bargaining table and then insist that you have it your way or it's the highway. So what I'm asking you to do this evening is to do the right thing. If you're gonna impose, impose elimination of the furloughs, impose the employee picking up their contribution. But don't increase the pain by not only continuing the furloughs of five percent and imposing eight percent or seven percent contribution. That's the unjust part. Now I know there's varying legal opinions out there. You know, you folks have worked with attorneys, so have I. You know, you get ten in a room, you'll get five or six different opinions. So the bottom line is, I'll tell you right now, if you impose what I'm suggesting, I'm not gonna talk about unfair. I'm not gonna go that direction because it's morally the right thing to do. I'd be glad to answer any questions, gentlemen, lady. But I'm asking you to reconsider. I'm asking you to step back away from the cliff and make the right decision, not only for the city. Because if you impose what you're about to impose, it will establish very poor public policy. Because to go and ask your employees to help out in the future, I'm already, I'm telling you, you know, you might as well not go there. But it also communicates out to every other public employee in this community that if your employer asks you to help and you help, watch what happened in Yuba City. I don't think you want to wear that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mister Stuckey, I have a question for you. Are you offering or putting this offering on the table?
It's not a proposal because uh Mister Mayor, I don't believe in negotiating in public. You know, we're not here to negotiate, we're not here to propose. I don't have the authority from, you know, the membership to to make a proposal. I'm willing to support going back to the table and trying to negotiate through our differences. In fact, there's tentative agreements. One of which we spent considerable time on with your public works director trying to work out the issues related to the twelve hour shifts at the plant. We worked through those. It was give and take. You know, we have another, several other tentative agreements. You know, those go by the wayside unless we get a contract in place. Right?
Understand. I just wanted to know if that was an offer that was being put on the table.
Not negotiating in public, as mayor.
I can appreciate that. We're not going to negotiate in public either. I just wanted to know if that is something that you were willing to move forward with, so.
Well, I've made a recommendation to you to do something which I believe is the right thing to do. Because and I I'll make this comment and then I'll I'll end. It's the lower end of the pay scale of the unit that we represent that is gonna suffer the greatest from you imposing what you're about to impose. It's not fair to them uh because we have these bigger issues and differences. And the settlement offer that I I made after we came out of uh fact finding, I thought gave both sides a fair way to try to get this thing resolved. But um you opted not to do that because you saw the offset as a salary increase. To me, it's not a salary increase if it doesn't increase the employee's spendable income.
Alright, thank you for your comments. Uh is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for comments.
I think the one comment I would have is um our employees are a great group of individuals that are dedicated to the service to our community. With that said, um I also believe that whatever happens here tonight opens the door for immediate and should be considered um to come back and negotiate no no matter what uh the result of of tonight is. We would open that, open that door to to have you come back um and we can move forward rather quickly behind that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, um to the mayor. I wanna say chair because of previous. I've struggled a lot with um this set of negotiations. So they're much different than um I experienced at the county level um in the way that county was a just a little bit more financially um able to accommodate um compensation for lost uh benefits or compensation. Uh by doing the trading that's being asked here, um financially, a little bit better set. The problem is that um I think there was um somewhat a rigidity uh in the negotiations uh last year and that's the just the way I came to a conclusion, uh going back and looking at the history of it. So I'm having difficulty with uh the set of goals that were made and the rigidity that they had trying to achieve um those goals. Um and perhaps not allowing it to slip for a year or two on uh some of the balanced budget. I didn't even hear any discussion on that. Um so that that is I have a problem with that. I have difficulty taking away from people that have already um received nothing more. Uh but the 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 facts are is there's very little funding really available except one time. Uh Mister Stuckey did uh bring up the fact that there are cases where um reserves are highly reduced. Um our only difficulty is is that CalPERS is an untrustworthy partner where they can come in and just take away five hundred thousand, a million dollars that are, oh, we're gonna redo the the formulas and they've done that now twice. Uh while I was at the county and then also here. Uh so that took a lot of the funding that we thought we could have to utilize for employee increases away into retirement. Uh to keep that balanced out. So it's not a complete loss, it's keeping your retirement stabilized. I would like us really to get back to the table. I think there were some, there are some solutions that can be can be done. Uh we do need, we do need to have, I'm gonna call it a reset button. Um action that will actually be a definitive marker. Uh and then from there, uh and as short a time as period as possible, uh get back and get a resolution to this and as proposed. Uh and if if that is a heartfelt thing by the employees to to make that change, that we could achieve it in an extremely short period of time to where we can get back to being uh at least um satisfied uh with the decisions that we've made. It's a hard, this is a real tough one.
Yeah, you know, first and foremost, I want to thank each and every one of you guys. You guys are valuable, valuable employees of the city of Yuba City. When six or seven years ago, we came across this issue and that was the economy tanking, at that point in time, given the council, none of us knew that this thing was gonna drag out as far as long as it could, this far. We all of us thought it was a two, three year cycle and things were gonna turn around. At that point in time at the council, we made a decision not to make any layoffs at all. But come to you guys to say, hey, we need your guys' help to get through this and graciously with all of you guys here and all the other bargaining units, you guys all accepted to take furloughs and 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 keep your pay salaries where you are to keep everything going. I get it. And I can be um understanding from your standpoint of view as well, saying, you know what, we haven't gotten a raise. I get that as well. And when you look at the private sector, everybody's lost jobs, nobody's gotten raises. But I can be the first one to sit here and tell you that once we see those numbers improving, sales tax are coming up. You guys will be the first ones coming across across the board and saying, you know what, I believe all of our employees across the board deserve a raise. And I can honestly tell you, taking a look at numbers and when you're trying to balance the budgets, like your own home uh checkbook, when you're trying to balance your own checkbook and you're dipping out of your savings account, pretty soon there's nothing out of your savings, there's nothing there checking to do it. And that's where the the dilemma's been here is is how long do you keep trying to balance and how long do you keep trying to kick that can down the curbs without making some hard, hard decisions? And it's very, very hard to keep moving forward, trying to balance your budget out of reserves. Pretty soon there is no reserves left to come out, no matter how you look at it. And the numbers are numbers when you look at it. And I, like I said, I I think you guys are the greatest employees of the city and I thank you guys for everything that you guys have done. And it's no easy decision for us to sit here and impose something where you're looking at it going, what are we doing? But again, I would recommend that you come back tomorrow and saying, if if Mister Stuckey's saying, hey, we can get this thing moving. This thing doesn't go into effect till June thirteenth and I don't even think that it affects until June twenty-fifth. We got almost thirty days to come up with a whole new contract. We're open. Let's let's get this thing moving. We don't want to sit here and not have another year stall out with any kind of negotiations.
I just wanna say um as far as the employees, you guys are amazing. The work that I've seen, I go through the offices and you you are just wonderful, wonderful employees and I can't express that enough. I've been where you are and I've shared this with each each of you before. I've been on the furlough road. I've been on a fifteen pers- percent decrease of salary due to furloughs. And it's tough. It's really, really tough. I've had a really tough, difficult time going through all the paperwork and trying to really pin this down and it's a tough, tough decision. My recommendation would be honestly to come back. Let's let's do this. Um let's keep it moving. Um whatever happens tonight, I'd highly recommend that we get together and we continue the process and make this work. Um you guys deserve it. Don't give up. Come back to the table and and let's make this right. Gary made a suggestion, uh recommendation. I agree. You know, bring it back. Let's do this. Let's do it tonight. You know, let's let's do it tomorrow morning. Um but I I'm behind you and I support the work that you do. I want you to get this. So um do the right thing and bring back to the table quick.
I'd like to comment also before we uh entertain a motion on this item. Is that we have negotiated now for well over a year. And what Gary brought to us tonight or suggested tonight fits within the goals of what we set out with from the very beginning. And had that been brought to the table, I think we wouldn't be sitting here tonight. And so I would encourage you to, if you as a group concur with what he has suggested tonight, that you get together with him and bring that back to the table. And let's get this resolved as quickly as possible. So with that, I will entertain a motion. So with that, uh I will entertain a motion. Alright, I'll give you just two minutes.
First is for the record, I think it's important because this is part of the mindset issue. The employees see it as they stepped up to bat to loan you this money. To give you a time period to try to get the house in order, to work through that economic downturn. They see it as the loan is now due, they are due their money back. That is the piece that the council seems to want to say, we've got limited resources and I understand, you know, one time money is one time money. And I understand, once they're gone, they're gone, but you know, s- agencies at some point have to get their out house in order. And if that means making cuts, so forth, you know, so be it. The employees gave you time to try to figure it out and that's where where they're at. I made my suggestion as an alternative to the imposition that was on the agenda. But in part in that is the issue of the employees' spendable income being reduced. And so that's the gonna be the difficult run. The other thing is they've watched as hundreds of thousands of dollars have gotten spent on new vehicles, on. Pumps that aren't needed, on forklifts that are used twice a year. That's what's irritating, you know, especially since you haven't repaid the loan.
To the mayor. I'm gonna respond to that, there was no loan made, there was a guarantee given. You can laugh all you want, there was a guarantee, there was a guarantee from this council made. That your employment would be held whole, that we would not lay anyone off. We had the option to send people home unemployed. That was the wrong thing for us to do. We did not feel that our employees deserved to be sent home. We felt that we could make and dig into reserves, spend those reserves wisely. And stretch this thing out as long as we could. We see a turn coming. We see a turn at twenty eighteen coming, we hold to that. But we also hold a promise. That we're here for our employees. This is a disagreement over dollars, we don't wanna take money from you. There were twenty one sessions in which we could have come to a resolve that would not have come to this night. Then tonight we hear, well, instead of making this drastic cut, do it this way. That's what I say, bring it back to us, bring it back to us.
I would just like to echo that, that it was a a promise given. That we would keep your jobs secure and keep them whole. There's a lot of private businesses that have laid off a lot of people. And those people don't have jobs today, or they've had to take lesser jobs. Because they weren't able to to keep the jobs that they had, but we gave you our word that we would keep you here. If you would help us through this by having the furloughs, it was not alone, as he mentioned. It was an agreement, a trade off. So that we could guarantee that you'd be here in this room tonight to have a voice in your future. We're saying to you tonight. That if you bring this back to the table, that we will do everything possible. To achieve those goals that we set forth from the very beginning. The public session has been closed. Alright, uh entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make staff's recommendation uh for to adopt one, two and three.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I'll second. Alright, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Buckland?
Aye.
Councilmember Cleveland?
No.
Councilmember Dibol?
No.
Mayor Dukes?
Aye.
Right. Motion passes. Wait for a moment, should be room to clear. Alright, item number fourteen. Business of the city council, councilmember Cleveland.
Well, it's nice to be uh home again, although it was awful wonderful to be able to uh. Travel with my wife on our uh fortieth anniversary uh vacation, yeah forty years. Um she made a request and where she wanted to go and I did everything I could to make sure I got her there. And uh we had a wonderful time, the only uh bad thing was basically Disney World and uh the Caribbean area. So after forty years, I thought she deserved at least that, at minimum. And uh uh the only problem is is uh my phone went into the ocean, so uh. Everything I had on it and the pictures that I had taken, a hundred and something of them and video is gone, very disappointing. Um we did have some though from the ship and from other things, but uh. Other than that, I haven't been here to be able to uh go to any meetings uh since we were doing our celebrating. They'll start up, uh I think it is tomorrow is how it's supposed to be, I don't know if it got canceled, the housing authority, gotta give them a call. And uh other than that, um it's wonderful to be back at home. Uh my grandson, I gotta say, um he's turning out to be a great young man, the reason I say this is that um he did a. Great job of taking care of my garden, not overwatering or underwatering. Um and then he uh was able to be uh carry the flag at the lobster feed, he's a civil air patrol. Uh in that and he was able to carry the flag, um the guest to at the lobster feed. And then he dug in there and just helped dug into the kitchen and helped me out, um my wife did too and. It was a very successful lobster feed this time, I made uh thirty four gallons of clam chowder. And um worked again, cuz I stress out on that every every year cuz it's. Clam chowder sometimes uh doesn't thicken or set right. Other than that, I think it was um, it's great to be home.
Alright, thank you, councilmember Dibol.
Uh let's see, we had the Yuba City Unified School District meeting, which was um pretty much talking about the year end activities going on. And some of the summer events that are gonna be coming up for the kids. I'm sorry I missed out on the Kiwanis dinner, but I had my special Mother's Day, so. I heard it was a great success, I heard many people talk about it, so sorry I missed it, but at the same time, I had a great time with my daughter. And we had girls on the run, um it was a beautiful, beautiful event. Um to watch all those little girls cross that finish line was very, very exciting. Um you know, they they set their goals and they each ev- each of the little girls crossed that finish line. And I happened to be called the sweeper along with two other uh ladies and so. She's right there. Um so we made sure that everybody was crossing the finish line, so um I we. I ran one time through and then came back, I took a second run through. Um cheered two girls back to the finish line, one of them was crying and sweating and she looks at me and she goes. I'm sweating, I can't do this, and I said, yes, you can, so I said, you know, you don't have to run hard, let's just bounce our feet. And go right back to the finish line and and she did, she started bouncing her feet and she made it to the finish line um with her original coach. A second girl I walked up to and she stopped and I said, what's the matter? And she goes, my heart hurts. And I said, you know what, my heart hurts too when I run too fast, so we're gonna run really slow. So we ran really slow and I took her all the way to the finish line and then let her cross and she was so excited. The third one, then I made my third round because there was a a mother and a daughter who were walking the entire distance, the daughter was epileptic. And um so when I came back halfway through that route again, so probably with the eighth mile. So um the mother said, what are you, what are you doing? And I said, I told you I'd be back. So I started walking with them and little girl wouldn't hold my hand up first. And so as we're walking, then she slipped her hand to mine, so we started walking hand in hand. And then I said, you're gonna try to run? And she wouldn't talk to me, she would just nod her head, so we started running, just jogging a little bit. And she stopped, just dead in her tracks and I go, oh, uh oh. So I said, do you want me to carry you on my back? So I literally picked it and she got really excited, the big smile and everything, so I picked her up, put her on my back. We started walking and her mom's like, oh no, she really likes that, she's never gonna get off. So as soon as I showed her the finish line, she said she want, she actually spoke, she said, I wanna run. So I let her down and we held hands and we ran all the way through the, she was the last person that came through. And she literally put me in tears at the end, she i- and it was so ecstatic, the smile on her face, just that she did it. So anyway, it it was just inspiration to be amongst all of those ladies. Um let's see, uh I would like to make an announcement, there is a Punjabi American Festival coming up this weekend, I know it's Memorial Day weekend. Um but on Sunday, the twenty fourth at three o'clock, there is gonna be a ceremony. Um honoring Lieutenant Brian Murphy, um he was uh the lieutenant who was shot fifteen times. Um by the gunman at at the Wisconsin Sikh Temple in two thousand twelve. And he will be honored that that day, so I do have tickets, um if anybody would like to go. Please contact me and I would be happy to give you tickets um and just to honor the gentleman, so it would be nice. And I think that was it.
Thank you, councilmember Gill.
Very busy with the sort of beach flood agency, seems like we had three meetings, uh two back to back and the board meeting, we did pass. The body issuance up to fifty million dollars to refinance some of the bonds and pay down the Roble Bank loan. Uh the project's been delayed uh due to the Native American Indians fines. And so we're hoping to get that project up and started hopefully in July and and try to see what we can finish out. Uh and I'll try to drag it on kinda like we did, we were able to do last year due to the weather. Um and also on June twentieth, um signed up to do Dancing with the Stars. As a council member and as a former mayor of Yuba City, so we've got mayor of Yuba City challenging the mayor of Marysville, Ricky Smoya. Uh so Ricky's doing his on Friday night and I'm doing mine on uh Saturday night, so it's a great cause, uh funds raised, go to the Write Out Foundation. Uh but it is a heck of a lot of work, we've got two numbers for two minutes, I can't believe the amount of work that's putting put in for four minutes worth of dancing. Uh so if you guys are interested in buying tickets, coming out and supporting me, it'll be June twentieth at Kaluza Casino, uh tickets are thirty five dollars, so come out and support me.
Thank you, councilmember Gill, council, our vice mayor Buckland.
That four minutes is gonna feel like a lifetime.
It already is.
Um number thing, I I met with the senior commission uh about a week and a half ago to discuss. What the proposed elimination of the Yuba Sutter Transit Stop at the Senior Center on Ainsley. Um trying to get as much public awareness that that there's a route change to Route One for Yuba Sutter Transit. Or proposed uh route change, uh this is going in front of the uh board on Thursday. Uh afternoon, four o'clock, Yuba County Government Center. Should anyone uh feel so compelled to come over and speak to the issues related to a need for our senior center to have. Continued service, the nearest service would be five hundred feet away uh from one route. And nine hundred feet away from another route. Uh my concern to that is that's good on one or two spring days. Uh but when we start getting into the hundreds or it's very cold, uh I think we need to have access directly in front of our senior center. And especially as that air or as that uh building gets more and more use um over time. Also attended the uh police officer memorial to honor thirteen fallen uh police officers. Um this year, it's held over at the Yuba City uh Police Department, was very, very well attended. Um in fact, I, you know, you kinda walk into the into um, you know. Many of us were there and and you walk up and you don't realize just how many people are have shown up to to this event. And they continue to pour in um as the event goes on, it's fifteen minutes, that's all it takes. Uh but it's to honor those lives and and certainly to honor the individuals, not only in law enforcement, but public safety that continue to do the job. Uh day in and day out. Uh attended the Secog Government Relations um Affairs Committee and and one of the things that is. Coming back to the general board at Secog will be uh whether Secog as a body, twenty nine uh directors support. Senate Bill uh sixteen. This is a a bill that's uh moving forward uh rapidly. And it is related to the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Program in the state of California. The gasoline uh excise tax is slated to go up by ten cents uh per gallon. According to this, you know, if this bill passes, diesel will go up by twelve cents per gallon. Uh the sales tax on diesel will stay the same, so the one that the tall cents is an excise tax. Two uh cents of that will be used for trade, court or improvement. Uh vehicle license fee would go up annually by point zero seven percent over the next five years. Vehicle registration fees will go up by uh the minimum of thirty five dollars, commercial vehicles will be substantially more. There would be no increase on weighted vehicles or the large commercial trucks. And zero emission vehicles will be required to pay an additional one hundred dollars. I look at this and and part of the caveat to this bill is that uh Caltrans become more efficient by thirty percent. Uh over three uh three year period of time. Couple um position or the position I hold on this is Caltrans should be more efficient. Um I'm not sure thirty percent achieves any type of meaningful goal um at this point. To increase the fees, the way that that they're looking at um will punish the consumer twice. Uh first at the pump for your own personal use and second in any goods and commodities that you may buy here in the state of California. Uh because those are gonna be passed along to you as the end user. So I look at this thing and and uh certainly without any additional input that that reviewing this. Uh my intent is to go down uh to Secog on Thursday and oppose uh any recommendation behind this bill. So if if anyone has any other feelings to this, or if our council would like to take up this matter, I'd be certainly glad to to discuss it. Uh further, also went to the Yuba City Unified uh School Meeting. And uh plans are moving forward, the architectural plans are moving forward on two new gyms, one for Berry School and one for Terre Bueina. And then we also heard of a potential uh grant uh possibility for the delivery of um city water. All the way down to the Berry School uh project, so that may be something that would uh be coming forward in the in the future. Also attended the ribbon cut ribbon cutting for uh Core Financial and Wrighton Wright. Uh it was quite an evening uh over there off of Plymouth Street. And um they've built been in business, but they've joined the chamber, they're they're getting very, very active. Um and also just met this week with the city of Marysville to to discuss mutually beneficial water issues. Uh as more of that comes up, uh be coming back to the council, that's all I got.
Alright, thank you. Uh I have a number of items, uh Cash mentioned regarding the Sutter Beach Flood Control Agency. Attended those meetings, I'm not gonna reiterate what he's already said. Did attend the Yuba Sutter United Way Breakfast last week and honored uh their annual. Recipients of different awards and it was a pleasure to be there and and support the United Way. Also attended the peace officer memorial ceremony, which is council or vice mayor Buckland mentioned is uh. A very sobering event to attend, but it was good to see the. A very sobering event to attend, but it was good to see the turnout. It seems like each year it it gets better. And it's it's good to see the the people of our community stepping up and supporting our peace officers. Given what's been going on around the country. Attended the Feather River Air Quality Management District Meeting, Gil Cizer Drainage District Meeting. And the Mosquito Vector District Meeting, nothing really to report out of those. Attended the Regional Water Authority Meeting with Diana Langley last week. It was the first time to attend that. And to be a part of a regional approach to our water management and came up with some, some good ideas out of that. She mentioned briefly tonight about the cash for grass. One of the things that was talked about was having a plan in place. And even if we fund a small portion of a program to get it in place and put people on a waiting list. When the drought money becomes available from the state, that money is gonna quickly be swept up by those cities and communities that have plans in place. And so it's really important that we get that done so that we're in a position to be able to take advantage of those type programs. I believe it was Folsom that implemented their plan last week and in the first day, they they gave away over a hundred thousand dollars. In cash for grass swap outs and used up all of the money that the city council had set aside for a year. So you can see that these are a very popular program. So we would just wanna be in a position where we can be able to offer those type of programs and have the funds available from the state.
What kind of grass were you talking about? Is this lawn?
That was lawn, turf, turf, yes.
Confused with everything going on.
Understand, yes. And then I just wanted to remind folks that May twenty first, which is Thursday. Is the anniversary of the bus crash in Martinez. And would recommend that folks spend some time going out to the memorial and just remembering those lives that were lost many years ago. All right, and then I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Vivian Brown Lee. Eighty seven of Yuba City. She went home on May seventh, two thousand fifteen after a brief illness. She was at home surrounded by her loving family who cared for her through her illness. She is survived by her twin daughters Karen Cardasselli. And Sharon Cornelius of Yuba City. She and her girls called themselves the Three Musketeers as Vivian was divorced from their dad, Joseph. Who is now deceased when the girls were very young and essentially raised them alone. Mom loved her son in laws as her own. We cannot imagine the life without our mom, but we know the Musketeers will reunite again in heaven. So we'd like to close this meeting in honor of Vivian Mae Brown Lee tonight. With that, we adjourn the meeting. Thank you.